Well, good afternoon, St. Mary's County, St. Mary's County, St. Mary's County Public School teachers, students, parents, community members, and anybody else who might be jumping in on YouTube and Facebook and on our streaming site for the SMCPS website. We're going to spend about an hour this afternoon with this second town hall meeting dedicated to discussing the process and where we are in the process in planning for the reopening of schools for the 2020-2021 school year. And we said that this really three Rs. There's recovery, where we were last, where we ended last year and the gaps that we have redesigned, which is what we're doing right now and moving from the online platforms that we had and standing up a new online platform, learning management system, to ultimately the return of students to the, to instruction in the 21 school year and emphasizing the safe return to school. Your input is very important on the website, www.smcps.org/streaming, where hopefully many of you are watching this video. There's an opportunity for you to put forth questions and we've had that opportunity to put forth questions open since our last town hall meeting, last month, and we've been receiving questions as we go. I think we're well over 400 questions. Many of them are asking the same question, but in a little bit modified way. At the end of the presentation, we're going to kind of address some of the larger general questions and then recognize that there are a lot of very specific questions people are asking that we don't have answers for yet, such as, you know, marching band and extracurricular and a particular portion of a course or the tech center. There are some very specific questions that we don't have the answers for right now. It'll depend on what the final model is for the opening of schools and what we're able to provide for all of our students. So keep asking the questions. The questions drive our work. The questions are being forwarded back to each one of the committees and work groups, and they are helping us best understand the questions that you have and put together a plan that hopefully addresses as many questions as we possibly can. So start with a little bit of timeline. In earnest, from March, April, and May, we were just trying to get everybody through. We were trying to put together a system that, that at least could track student progress and so that we could end the year and give some kind of an idea of what kind of progress kids made in the fourth quarter. Edgenuity, Imagine Learning, clever sign on. You all learned it. You all did it. Thank you very much. In June, we really started to put that all aside, look at lessons learned and started to plan in earnest for what the fall will look like. The return in the, in, so that, that time, the, in June, we really were completely going in with the Schoology platform and doing a great deal of instructional work with our content supervisors, building learning frames and sequencing so that when we do our work in July and August, when the kids come back, they're going to have a great learning management system and a platform from which that they can experience instruction, whether they be direct face-to-face, hybrid, or virtual. We did some surveying in June that was very, very topical. We are going to be doing much more detailed surveys in the next several weeks culminating with a questionnaire individualized to each parent for them to identify what their intention is in opening school, whether they are interested in going fully virtual or whether they are interested in the hybrid model we are developing and we'll be talking about this afternoon and at length at the board meeting next week. So there's going to be more than enough opportunity for people to give input and then a very specific survey targeted each family where we're gathering data so we know what to expect when we get to the first day of school. In the month of July, we've done a town hall meeting. We've doing this town hall meeting, the stakeholder groups, the, the groups that you're going to hear reporting out today. They have been meeting multiple times throughout the week. They've been doing all kinds of Zoom stuff. It's all been virtual. So coordinating a great deal of it has really been a task for the people overseeing each one of the groups. So when you hear the report out from the group lead, understand that they have really been utilizing technology to gather as much information and as much input from people in this, throughout this summer. Next Wednesday, that's the big day. That's the Board of Ed meeting. That's the day when we're going to be presenting, the group's going to assemble. They're going to be presenting the, the entire plan to the Board of Education for their input and their direct approval, or if they want to see modifications, those modifications, we can go back and then put that all together. It will be finalized, the plan will be finalized by the end of this month so that when we get into August, that's when we're going to have direct communication with each one of the families and identify exactly what the learning environment for your child is going to be like in September. Keep in mind that MSDE requires us to post the final recovery plan in the second week of August on our website, and of course, we'll be able to do that. All of our work has been posted to date on our website under the big button Recovery Planning. So you can go there and you can see how we're working. There, the last town hall video is there right now. This town hall video, when we're done, it will be processed, it will be posted, and it will be closed captioned for those people who might be hearing impaired so that you can actually follow along with what we're talking about. Governor Hogan is also doing a press release today at four o'clock. I don't, it's right now 4:06. I don't know if he started his press release yet, but we planned ours two weeks ago, this whole thing, so we didn't feel it was right to change what we were doing. And I have been provided, Superintendent has been provided no indication that he might be making a decision that would impact school students. So we're going forward with this. I do have, we do have staff members who are going to be watching it. And if there is any announcement made by the governor's office that has an impact to the school system in real time, we'll try to talk about it at the end of this town hall. But my speculation is that he is probably going to be talking to all Marylanders about the troubling trend we have seen in the last several days or last week and a half since we went into July. We are seeing a spike in Corona cases. We are seeing a spike in confirmed cases. Now, overall, Maryland has been, we've, we've flattened that curve. We've stayed down there. We've been in a really good space. We've been wearing masks since March and even before Maryland said we needed to wear a mask, our health officer put in the order that everybody had to wear masks in St. Mary's County. So we've been leading the way in preventative elements, and I think that's why we have the numbers that we have, which are pretty good. But Maryland overall is increasing, and obviously, if you've turned on the news, the rest of the United States is equally struggling and some much more than others. Why does this matter? Because the discussion that's had in June looked a lot different than the discussion we're having today. And if the trend that we're seeing over the last several days continues, the conversation we're going to be having in August is also going to be quite different. If the government decides to take back at all, to move back from stage two to the beginning of stage two or stage one, obviously, that will directly impact the schools and we will go back to where we were. As a reminder to everybody on this wonderful chart, the chart begins in March and that's when we close schools. So, all right. All of our work, all of our work, the entire task force at our core educating all with rigor relevance and positive relationships, absolutely. But the guiding principles for our recovery plan, there's been six of them, and they are in descending order. Health and safety is our first guiding principle. We have to make decisions that are not expedient or necessarily popular and certainly not political. We're making decisions about the health and safety of our students and our staff who work every day for our students. The first thing we have to do is consider the health and safety of all the individuals involved. And I know there's been a lot of conversations. I know there's been a lot of mandates and threats to hold back this or that. But we really aren't going to do anything that's going to put our students or our staff in jeopardy. The second is equity and access. We have to recognize that all of our students come to us in different ways. Some quite well-prepared and well-supported and all of those things, and others not as well-prepared and perhaps not as well-supported. So whatever we put together has to be equitable for all people and the access is a driving portion of our work. And all of you hearing this today, hearing me today, you're going to hear the same thing over and over again. St. Mary's County is a prosperous county, is a fantastic place to live and work and raise kids. But there is a gulf between those who have and those who have not. There is a huge digital divide, just based on geography, with the people who have access to high-speed internet and those who do not. So that's a huge challenge for the school system, and that's not a challenge that we've ever been presented with before this. Of all the things we've been asked to do, one of them hasn't been provide high-speed internet to every single home in, in the county. But with this in our plan, that's, that's an incredibly important component piece. Every parent listening to this and recognizing that the fall is coming, no matter what option you choose, it's going to be dependent upon your ability to have internet connection either at your home or convenient to your child so that they can do the work that they need to do online. After equity and access, communication and engagement. That's why we're doing this town hall. We need to let you know what our thoughts are. We are in a county where it's very challenging to get consistent, reliable, valid information. Most of us traffic through social media sites, and social media sites aren't necessarily the most reliable way to get information. So if you can do nothing else, please direct everybody to the school system website and the direct statements made by people on the school system website and the documents that we publish. That's what the truth is. The next is engaging in high-quality instruction. We have to, we have to harness the very best resources to make sure that what is delivered to children is aligned to the Maryland state's standards, is rigorous, is engaging, and ultimately makes them the very best students and the very best prepared citizens that they can. Technology and resource support, that goes back to equity and access. When the pandemic started, we had about a, not quite a one-to-two computer ratio for our kids. Meaning we had about 9,000 computers to 18,000 kids, but the 9,000 computers weren't necessarily deployable devices, and they were certainly never devices that were assigned to children. They were the devices that we had in computer labs and in classrooms, and that's how we did testing in the schools. So we are taking a huge jump into this. We have cobbled together all of our resources. We have ordered over 7,000 laptops. But because we ordered them a little late and we're further back in the queue, they might not arrive until we get into September. So technology and resource supports is going to be a huge piece. And then the final part is again, going back really to the equity and access, recognizing that there are a whole bunch of kids that come to us and they have a whole bunch of needs. And our job is not just to educate children. It's also to support them in their social, emotional learning and getting a nutritious meal every single day, to making sure that they have the resources that they need that have broken down the barriers so that they can be as successful as they need to be. So those six guiding principles are what are driving this work. And honestly, they're the driving principles of everything we do, whenever we do. The first thing we try to do, first thing we always have in mind is the safety of our kids and the safety of our staff. So back to the plan. The Maryland Together Plan presented by the state superintendent is in draft form in June and then finalized more or less on June 23rd, emphasized that the decision to reopen rests in the hands of the state superintendent of schools, Dr. Karen Salmon, and she will make that decision in concert with the governor's office and all related resource groups, such as the Maryland Health Department and the Center for Disease Control, right? It's the state superintendent's decision. To understand how that decision would be made, on June 23rd, they introduced this decision matrix that said that based on what the governor says as far as stage one, stage two, or stage three, the school systems in the state of Maryland will have to go through a three-step process. Keep in mind, we are still in stage two, in the middle. The governor has said stage two, which means we have the latitude to do some in-person school activities. And in fact, we just started some of our in-school activities with some of our athletic conditioning programs that started on Monday of this week. When it was originally presented on June 23rd, stage three, it said, when we get to stage three, in-school activities may fully resume and schools can begin normal operations. So woo-hoo, we get to stage three, we're all back, we're back to normal. This has been updated. On July 18th, the state superintendent presented to the local superintendents the same decision matrix, but it was changed and it says now in stage three that in-person activities may resume and schools begin normal operations consistent with additional safety measures. New language. I can only assume, we can only assume that those additional safety measures will be defined by the Maryland State Department of Education and the governor's office so that we really understand in the event that we do move to stage three and we are expected to resume normal school operations, they will define what those safety measures are to keep our students and our staff working with our students safe. And why is that important even down here in St. Mary's County? In St. Mary's County, we've had as of, let me see, as of the 14th, we've had 741 cases of confirmed cases of COVID in the county, and that number is going up every single day. Now, some of those cases may be people who've been brought in for testing and they're asymptomatic. Some of those people get sick and recover quickly. Some of those people get sick and go to the hospital and recover and can leave. And some of those people get sick and they go to the hospital and they need to be in intensive care, and we monitor all of those. And this information is available on the St. Mary's County Health Department site. And it's really important that we all go there and visit to see how we're tracking as, as a county. The, the information that's there is broken down by age and race, and it's very eye-opening. Most important thing we need to realize as a county is that there have been kids nine, from zero to nine, who've been confirmed cases of COVID in this county, 24 of them. And from age 10 to 19, there's been 51 of them. So there have been 75 students, 75 student-aged children in St. Mary's County since the, since this broke out who have been confirmed for COVID. Why is that important in our planning? Because when we reintroduce students to schools, if any student tests positive for COVID, currently, all of the students in that class and that teacher would then have to be tested and quarantined for 14 days. So imagine trying to bring back 18,000 students and at a secondary level, a student who moves from, say, six classes throughout the day, even if they're only at 15 kids a pop, they get confirmed to have COVID. We would then have to notify all of the students in every single one of those classes, every single one of those teachers, the bus driver, morning and afternoon, if it's the same, anybody else that they interact with. They would then have to go get tested and they would have to be quarantined for up to 14 days from the last time they were in contact with that person in the classroom. Two weeks. Imagine what happens when you have three kids or four kids or five kids and you have huge swaths of people out for 14 days. Imagine what happens when you have those 14 kids or those whatever they are in the classroom, they all go out and get tested and multiple people in that group get identified and so on and so on and so on. So we are working very closely with the Health Department, with Dr. Brewster. We are talking about this. I'm talking with her pretty much every single day as we go through. We are all tracking all of these numbers. We had really, we had seen such a wonderful trend downward that we were, we were hopeful that we were going to get to a point where we weren't seeing community spread. But the numbers are tricking back up and there is community spread, and community spread is where you don't know where you got it. You were out doing something and somebody gave it to you. You can't track it back to, you know, this person gave it to me. It's somewhere out in the community, and that's where we are right now. So again, back to the plan, why we're having a meeting, why we're talking today. We've had over 90 people directly involved in working on this recovery plan. And it is certainly teachers and administrators and central office staff, but it's also parents and students and members from our associations and St. Mary's County Health Department personnel. So we have everybody in to talk about it, and the people within the group are reaching out to people outside of the group for more information. Because this is a time when you're looking at everybody else's plans. And why is that important? Because all of the great people in the state of Maryland and really across the United States have come to the conclusion that there's really only two different pathways for the opening of schools in the fall. One is universally called a hybrid classroom instructional model. And what that means is that you take all of your kids and you cut them in half. You don't actually cut the children in half. You cut the groups in half, alpha by this, alpha by that number, and half the kids come on Monday and Wednesday, half of the kids come on Tuesday and Thursday and Friday. Nobody comes, and that's when the teachers work through all of the elements that they have to because they only get to see a child two days out of five. So every single system in the United States is doing, is coming to the conclusion that some version of this. Parents, this is the best-case scenario. As of today, with the data that we have, with the way that we're tracking, with working with our local health officer who's working with the Department of Health in Maryland, who's working with the CDC, with working with all, that's the best-case scenario. The children would be in school two days out of five. Best-case scenario. And it is fraught with risks, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but that's the best-case scenario. So anybody who thinks that we're going to get to the end of August or September and all the kids are going to come back Monday through Friday, put it out of your head. That's not even being discussed. Period. So best case, hybrid classroom instruction, two days out of five. The other is a full virtual online, completely, don't step foot in a, in a building other than by appointment or if you need something or something like that. You are online learning. It'll be self-paced in some ways. The information is going to be there. You can work through it, but we are building a system where they, you would be able to interact with the teacher. There would be Google Meet, Zoom, face-to-face parts of it, so it wouldn't be what we had in the fall with a totally online, self-paced, asynchronous, edgenuity, work your way through it, that's it, get done with it. It will be more, much more interactive and tailored to the classes that we are building. But those are the two options for the fall. What we've seen in other systems, particularly Montgomery County, they presented their plan over the weekend. They talked about even if you go to a hybrid schedule, they said you don't start right off, first day of school, half the kids show up one day, half the kids show up the other day, half and half. You don't start like that. Instead, you, you phase it. You, you slowly build that capacity within your schools. And they laid, they've laid out a pretty good plan about that, where you begin, everybody, the first day of school is making sure everybody has a computer and online, you open it up and everybody is online virtually. We're working through all the bugs of all of that. Once we've worked out all the bugs, we've got people connected, computers, all of that stuff, once that starts, then, and everybody's comfortable in their space, then you bring in selected groups of students. And you might start with students that have an IEP that cannot be appropriately serviced outside of the school. It might be somebody who has a particular language skill or ELL or something that they need to come in. It may very well be just kids that are brand-new to the school system, starting with your kindergarten kids. Because we need to get the kindergartens in first because they've, they haven't been in a full-day setting necessarily unless they were in a pre-K program. But they're going to be in an all-day K program. They're going to have to be, get used to school. And they're going to have to get used to new school, school that no one's ever seen before, school with a face mask all day, school where you have to be distanced from your friends, school where you don't share your toys, tools, instructional materials. So you start with kindergarten just to see how that goes. And in the middle school, you start with sixth grade because those are kids brand-new to middle school. And so you want to bring them in and get them used to the structure of a middle school, the structure of changing classes, the structure of having a locker and what that looks like. And you bring in your ninth graders who are first year to high school, the size of the high school, the scope, the sequence. You orient them to the school. You help them understand how they move about so they understand their schedules, so they understand all of that. That's, that would be the second phase. You'd bring in those kids, and then if that goes well and we don't see a spike and we see that kids are able to actually maintain distance and wear a mask and we can move it forward and it seems to be working, then you would add in all the other classes until eventually you have a full complement of students going to school in a hybrid schedule, half one day, half the other. That is one of the more inconvenient ways to do things, but that's probably the very safest way to return kids to school. We're going to be talking a lot more about that in our groups, and when we present to the, to the school board next week, the Board of Education next week, that's going to be one of the discussions that needs to be had because of course, obviously, that has to be very explicitly planned for and very concretely communicated to parents so they understand where they fall in each one of those elements. Again, no matter what we go to, no matter how the world goes forward, there are six component pieces that are in place at every one of our schools and at all of our related workspaces. First is hand washing and hand sanitizer. The smell of hand sanitizer will be the smell of school known by most kids for the 21 school year. Hand washing, proper hand washing, teaching kids how to properly hand wash, building hand washing breaks in during the day, hand washing, hand sanitizer. Face covering. Everybody now, I think universally understands that the greatest thing you can do for your fellow human being is to wear a mask. It might not protect you, but it will protect them. And so all children will, will wear face coverings. All teachers and support staff and bus drivers and everybody else will wear face coverings because that's how we protect one another. Physical distancing, that six-foot model, absolutely. We're going to have to lay that all out and we're going to have to practice that. How we get, say, at a, at a high school, there's 1,800 kids enrolled. Let's assume that half of them show up, 900, let's say seven, 600 kids show up. What does that look like? How many bus runs do they have to make? When they get off the bus, how do we make sure that they are physically distanced as they go in school? Anybody who's actually been at a school in the morning and in the afternoon, what basically happens is in the span of three minutes, 1,000 to 2,000 bodies go from inside the school building to sitting on buses. So we have to rework all of that. Cleaning, obviously, new technologies are coming forward, the cleaning, the disinfecting, all of that is exceptionally important. And then the last is training, you know, training for this new normal, training across from our littlest, you know, five-year-old child coming in to the parents, to all of the support staff, the training that we need to make sure that we keep people as safe as possible. So no matter what happens, those six things are going to be elements of the plan. So going back again, I've almost talked for a half an hour. That's way too long. Nobody wants to listen to me for a half an hour, yet still I talk. The Maryland Strong Roadmap to Recovery, I've urged several, I've urged several times, read it. If you haven't read it, you need to read it. You need to read it. The Maryland Together Plan, very long. You need to read it. That's, that's, that's what we have for guidance. That's, that's what we have for guidance, and that's what we're using to build our plan. That's, that's what we have for guidance and that's what we're using to build our plan. Our plan that has to be posted by our website, run by our Board of Education, approved by MSDE according to 13 different criteria. When we looked at it, we said there were four basic parts, four pillars of a plan. How we're going to do teaching and learning, how we're going to provide services for students, how we're going to have supporting services to make sure we can do all the things that we need to do. And ultimately, how are we going to organize and support everybody and communicate to all of our stakeholders, our students, our parents, our larger community, what we're doing and why we're doing it? So at this point, after a half an hour of talking, exactly a half an hour of talking, I'm going to turn it over to the leaders of each one of these committees to talk about how their committee has gone, what their work is, what some of their ahas have been, and how they're closing in on those final recommendations that will be coming before the board next week on Wednesday. So we're going to start with, really honestly, a portion of that is what we're doing right now. Organizational and system supports. It's been led by our Deputy Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Maureen Montgomery, who really has, you know, she has seen it and she is ready to talk about it. And so at this point, I'm going to go to that slide and hopefully, fingers crossed, Dr. Montgomery is going to start talking and her little, her face will pop up in the corner of the slide. So Dr. Montgomery?
Good afternoon, Dr. Smith. Thank you. So Dr. Maureen and I are actually co-chairing the recovery team and co-chairing the organizational subcommittee. And it was our job to kind of frame the work of, of all the committees. We have much of our work that's infused into all of the other subcommittees. We're making sure that the stakeholders, as Dr. Smith referenced, we have 90 people that are serving on this committee. So we made sure that each one of the subcommittees had involvement and had representation from all of our stakeholders, parents, teachers, our associations, ESMIC and SMAS, the administration as well. So we were also looking at all of the MSDE requirements and figuring out how we were going to gather input from all of our stakeholders and from the community in order to organize those requirements and organize the committee. So looking at specifically, what we were looking at is communication and engagement. So for communication, as, as Dr. Smith has already referenced, we already did one town hall and the town hall was in June, June 24th. And this is the second town hall. Then we're going to present the actual components of the plan on July 22nd, next Wednesday, at the Board of Education meeting. And then we'll follow up with a parent letter where we'll put some details in that parent letter about the options that parents will have and that we're going to give to them at the start of school. And we'll try to outline advantages and disadvantages of those options that you'd be choosing. And then after that, we were looking at doing another town hall on July 29th to come back in and just kind of see where we are from there. So our subcommittee, as Dr. Smith also referenced, Schoology is the learning management platform that we're using. And our system was already involved in purchasing the Schoology Learning Management System for our system to use. We planned to spend the 2021 school year rolling that out with our staff and learning all of the component pieces so that we were ready to implement it for the 2122 school year. Well, then COVID hit, the pandemic hit, we needed to have a way to deliver content virtually and better than we did it in the fourth quarter of the last school year. So we decided to go all in and get the Schoology Learning Management System up and running. So that's taken a great deal of time and resources. So we're going to be working with the Schooly, with the learning management system. What we like about that is that it is going to provide options for our families and options for our staff. So our teachers are going to, when they're using the learning management platform, they're going to be able to use something called Google Meets and probably a lot of you are familiar with Google Meets. The teachers will be able to use Google Meets for their entire class. They'll be able to use Google Meets for small groups, for small group instruction or for individual students. And the other thing that they're going to be able to do is to develop screencasts. So they'll be able to record themselves or record lessons and post those things on Schoology. It's, it's quite a robust platform with a lot of options for resources that kids will have access to for us to deliver content. The other thing that we also appreciated is it does provide options for parents. So a parent is, if we have a student who, if we go completely virtual, the Schoology platform meets our needs for us to be able to go virtual. If we go to a blended learning environment where students are in for a few days a week and they're home for a few days a week, the Schoology platform allows us to deliver content that way as well. And then when we return to normal and we're all back together, then we are also going to continue to use the Schoology Learning Management System because we'll be able to, that's what we intended to do with it when we were originally looking at purchasing it for our system. So it's got a lot of great features. We look forward to partnering with our parents to become acquainted with all of those things. And we're going to have, we're going to have opportunities for parents. We're going to do screencasts for you so that you can get in there and learn all about the platform and kids as well. So that's where we are right now. We're going to spend, so also during August, we're going to do the technology, a technology survey. We're going to spend, we're going to spend time in August really looking at what technology needs our students have. As, as Dr. Smith referenced, we had a large number of kids who did not, were not able to access the platform. And even though, you know, 90% of our students did, 10% of our students did not. And that's not acceptable. So we're going to spend all of August figuring out how we can get devices to our kids and figuring out who has access so that every one of our students has access to learning. So that if we're virtual, they're all able to do that. So that's where we are. And I, I'm going to, each one of the other subgroups is going to talk through what their groups are doing. We've got the adult subgroup, we've got the supporting services subgroup, and then we've got the student service, the student services subgroup. So they'll, they'll give you information about each one of their areas. And finally, I want to end with talking about the staffing support. So as I've referenced, this is a platform that we intended to roll out during the 2021 school year so that we can implement during 2122. Our staff has had to do a tremendous amount of professional development and that is what we have been busy doing during the summer. And not only that, but thinking about how we're going to support substitute teachers in classroom, making sure that they understand how to use the learning management system and how we're going to support our paraeducators and all of the other people, the support staff that work with our children every day. With that, I will turn it over to the next group, Dr. Smith, if you want to advance the slide.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Montgomery. That was well done. And look, our technology seems to be working. So at this point, let's go to instruction. And I believe that's going to be Dr. Alex Jaffers.
Yes, thanks, thanks for the handoff. I had the pleasure of co-chairing the subcommittee with Ms. Lisa Bachner. She and I have been working together with the other committee leads. And as Scott said and Maureen said, they talked about these pillars of education and everything's interrelated. So instruction is the first of these four pillars. And as everybody has said thus far on the call, we, we've worked since late May to develop courses in Schoology with teams of teachers under the direction of the content supervisors to build these courses in this learning management system that meet the content standards of the Maryland content, Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards that have been set forth for all of our courses, for the most part. Also built in and embedded into these builds are the identification, the mitigation of any instructional gaps that we may have witnessed from, from when the pandemic first set foot here in St. Mary's County. So all of these issues are being addressed within the builds of Schoology, within the courses that we're providing. It should be noted explicitly that the Schoology platform will allow every course that we normally offer in St. Mary's County to be offered in this sort of unique learning environment in the fall. So everything that we've, normally, students have normally signed up for and signed up for and registered for in the, in the falls of past years will be offered again in this fall, 2021. So that also includes a, a grade recordation practice of a return to normal in the fourth quarter. Those of us that were on site, St. Mary's County, and we were offsite as the pandemic hit, we had to go to a modified learning and grading recordation practice. But I'm here to tell you that we are moving back to a return to normal with, with grade recordation and practices that teachers have used since the beginning of time. Segueing into the material side, we also want to be clear that materials are going to be disseminated as normal, as practiced in years past. Textbooks, novels will be inventoried, will be issued to students as they normally are. And will be expected to be taken to and from school as needed. When we return back to school, we expect these, these textbooks to travel with students as well as the technology, as Scott and Maureen had mentioned with regards to the technology piece. So we're expecting the materials like normal to, to help us get back to the sort of normalcy that we're expecting. Last but not least, we are developing an end-user website for parents and students so that they can actually see what this learning management system looks like. We try to be, have a consistent look and feel to most of our course builds so that the end user, like whether you're a student or parent or even the teacher can, there's a familiarity with, with the look and the feel of each of these builds and the resources embedded within. And we hope that this Google site will be launched soon so that everybody can take a peek for themselves.
Wonderful. So at this point, let's move on to students. Thank you very much, Dr. Jaffers. That was, that was a very brief summary of an incredible amount of work that has been going on with the Division of Instruction, the Division of Curriculum Instruction and the Office of Assessment and Accountability. You know, there are so many hands in that mighty lift and they're doing, you know, you're doing an incredible amount of work and just thank you very much. And although Ms. Bachner was not on, was not presenting, I mean, she is definitely a driving force as well by your side. So at this point, let's talk to Student Services. And I believe we're going to first, when we talk about Student Services, we're going to first hear from our Director of Special Education, Mr. Scott Serbiak. Mr. Serbiak, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Dr. Smith. I have the pleasure of co-chairing Student Services pillar with Sher Long, who you'll hear from in just a minute. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about special education 504 and what that'll look like as we move forward. Our system is, and obviously our department recognizes many diverse needs of our students. And moving forward and as we have Google Meet and this new platform with Schoology, we will be able to provide student interventions using a virtual platform for students that are not in school. So we will be able to provide those services virtually and meet the needs of our students. Also looking at our Schoology platform, it'll allow the opportunity to meet our IEP services throughout, through a face-to-face interactive model with our co-teaching with our teachers within a classroom setting. So we are working very closely with the Department of Instruction and multiple departments within our system to make sure that that's effective and we're meeting the needs of our students. We also recognize that we were closed starting in March, late March. So as students return, we will be giving students diagnostic assessments to beginning, the start of the school year to identify specific instructional needs of our students so that we can identify those needs and whether it be amend IEPs or increase services so that we are able to make up those services that were missed during our closure due to the pandemic. With that, I turn it over to my colleague Sher Long to continue with the pillar information.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Starting with attendance, attendance will be recorded for in-school and virtual environments. The committee, the subcommittee is working through how attendance is captured while working in the virtual environment. The Health Services Subcommittee is planning for healthroom management of student care for both healthy and ill students. And with that, we are considering healthroom spaces and traffic patterns. We're gathering materials and planning for the presentation of health education information for our students, our staff and our parents on hand washing, face coverings, and maintaining a healthy school environment. We are developing these educational model modules, excuse me, on the Schoology platform for students and staff. And considerations for all of our practices are planned in collaboration with the St. Mary's County Health Department to ensure best practices. We also have a subcommittee for mental health services and they are planning for all students to have access to social emotional learning lessons for both in-school and the virtual environment. The team is working on both counselor facilitated and self-guided lessons for elementary students and self-guided lessons for secondary students. And all of our students will have access to mental health counseling and support for school and virtual environments as well.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Long, the Director of Student Services. Let's move on to Supporting Services. And I think we're going to hear first from the Director of Transportation, Mr. Jeffrey Thompson. Mr. Thompson, are you on the line?
I am. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Mike Watson and myself are overseeing the Supporting Services categories, trying to mainly look at the safety and health of all of our students and making sure we're providing the best things we can to them. And the transportation category, which has definitely been mentioned quite a bit in our return to school concerns, we're definitely reviewing our seating capacities on buses to see if we need to address how many students should be and should be riding the buses when we do have students return to school and then what our routing options would be to see if we have to make routing adjustments on a normal basis to make sure we provide every opportunity for students who need transportation to get transportation to come to school. We're also reviewing the impacts, as you mentioned earlier, on the daily school bus arrivals and afternoon departures so we don't have a mass amount of students entering and exiting the schools so we can have proper social distancing between students today, go in and out and we can ensure the best, healthy, safe environment as possible. We're also reviewing our bus driver, bus attendant and student expectations to make sure that we know that we can train and identify the different issues that everyone needs to be aware of when they're riding the bus. And we're also reviewing our bus cleaning protocols to make sure we are effectively treating the buses and having buses prepared every day for the students that ride them. In our Cleaning and Healthy Committee, they're establishing a proactive approach to cleaning and maintaining safe facilities based upon the recommended cleaning protocols. They're establishing response plans to address the potential illness in students and staff. So they're trying to make sure they manage all the supplies that are coming into the system for cleaning and disinfecting, trying to manage different items with our HVAC systems without airflow and different aspects of that to keep our students healthy and safe. This is Mr. Mike Watson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I will be discussing briefly about food services and athletics and extracurricular activities. First, food services. We are, food services is considering a pre-ordering system that will allow ordering meals in advance instead of on that day going to line. This would allow the student services departments, the food services departments to prepare meals in advance and also have meals ready for students as they come in to serve students through the cafeteria line and then easily dismiss students to that location where the system decides where they could possibly eat. And that could be the cafeteria, back to their individual classrooms or other location deemed appropriate. The Food Services Department is also hoping to provide multiple days of meals if students are not in school every day. And as Dr. Smith presented earlier, if we are in an A-day, B-day schedule or students come to school face-to-face twice a week, that means they are home three times a week. So the Food Services Department is looking at pre-ordering options where families potentially pick up three days' worth of meals, breakfast and lunch, either at their home school site. And also if we are completely online, Food Services, Food Services will distribute via distribution sites as we have done so on the end of last year and all summer. Those Food Services sites are yet to be determined if that's going to be the case or the, the way the system goes. I will tell you that there will be more distribution sites than there were at the end of last school year to make pickup easier for students, students and parents geographically. Transitioning to athletics and extracurricular activities, we are currently in our Phase Two of our athletics plan and extracurricular activities plan. We started outdoor-only summer conditioning and activities with all of our safeguards in place. That started this week on Monday, July 13th. We have contact tracing in place. Students had to register through family ID. They have to have an active physical. And they also have to sign and acknowledge a COVID-19 form in order to participate. We are currently working on our next phase, which is developing multiple scenarios for what fall athletics may look like if we have fall athletics. I will state that again, there's been no determination regarding fall athletics to this point. So we are working through several different scenarios and modules and models based off of what competition schedules may look like. We have schedules in place and drafted for a SMAC. We have schedules in place and drafted for a SMAC schedule, which is our tri-county area, a dual-county schedule, and a St. Mary's County Public Schools only schedule. So we are, again, planning for multiple scenarios for whatever hand we are dealt with extracurriculars and activities. Seasonal start dates, the fall start date is slated for August 12th. That's been the last communication from the State Superintendent. So we are playing with that in mind. However, we do have contingency schedules based off of an August 12th start date, a September 1st start date, September 15th start date, and an October 1st start date. So all those different scenarios, again, are being planned for, including compressed schedules and moving seasons to later points in the school year as well.
Wow. Well, fantastic. Thank you very much, Mr. Watson. So those are the four groups and all of the other smaller subgroups that have been meeting and going through and working on this plan. The plan will come back and be presented at the Board of Education next week on the 20th, on August the 22nd, pardon me, no, on July the 22nd. And after that, then action will be taken by the board either to, to move forward with the plan as presented or to modify it as they determine best. So we have the 22nd, and then on the 29th, we're going to come back and have another town hall presentation. And what we're, what the original intent was that that last town hall presentation would be something that we'd be able to present in person because we had assumed we would be gearing up for a, an opening of school. So of course, we'd be able to gather in some form and interact with one another so that people could freely come forward and ask individual questions, and then we could respond in real time. I don't know whether that's going to be a possibility or not on July 29th. We're going to have to just wait and see as each day brings us a new set of information and new problems to be solved. After the town hall presentation, there will be a parent letter, and most importantly, everything is going to be updated on our website. Our website is Platform-Agnostic. You can read it on your laptop, your iPad, your Google device, your smartphone. So please make sure you're going to the source to get all of the most recent, up-to-date information. Your input is important. The, we will keep those questions open. We will keep streaming all of those questions, and we'll, they'll be going back, and we'll use them to inform our work with each one of the subcommittees. But at this point, what I'd like to do is stop sharing, and if we could, everybody, hey, does everybody have their camera on? Look at that, oh, what an August group of incredible leaders from St. Mary's County Public School System. We've had over 300 questions asked over the last, since the, since the survey opened last month, and we've, we've had quite a few added just today, and even a few as we've been going through today. I have four questions that we've kind of put together, and, and then I'll go back to the list and see if there's anything new that's kind of pressing and anything related after the governor's presentation. It's my, I've been getting updates as I've been sitting here. The governor's presentation sounds like it wasn't anything concrete, very similar to what you're hearing from us today. We really want to give the best service to kids. We really want to get back to some sense of normal, but we have to balance it with the data that we have in real time, and we have to balance it with the, the safety of our students and the people who are delivering instruction to serve it, to our students. And we'll say this, for those of you who did submit a political statement into a question box, a statement is not a question. A statement is a statement. And for all of those who don't have students in St. Mary's County Public Schools and have a very strong opinion about the need to have all of our kids back in a classroom, I ask you to go find yourself in a space that's 20 by 20 with 14 to 20 strangers and stay there for the next 15 minutes and see how comfortable you are, given the current state of things. Then do that five more times or six more times in one day. So as we hear from educators and they step forward and they say their hearts are breaking and they care about the kids so much and they want to see their kids and they want to get back to normal, but they're worried, understand that they are legitimate in their concerns. And we need to respect them as the professionals that they are and recognize that they do incredible things for our children every single day. And if we have to go through what we have to go through for the next six months, so be it. At the end of the six months, we'll all still be here, and we'll be standing, and we'll be able to move forward together. But with that, there have been a lot of questions, and some of them were really good questions. And so the first, I think I'm going to be able to answer. I'm not going to call on any of you. I think you're all, you're all good to go. Will there be a fully virtual option available to parents? I mean, that was asked multiple times, and I think that no matter what, that's, that's a key component of the plan. Does everybody nod their head? Everybody nods their head? Okay, great, good. Yeah, that's pretty much there. If masks are required in the hybrid model, what will be the consequence for students refusing to wear one? How about, how about, how about Ms. Long, as the Director of Student Services? What's going to be the consequence for a student who doesn't wear a mask?
Yeah, so our first priority is to educate, right? Educate, educate, educate our students and our families to the importance of wearing a mask.
Right. So, so we would be working with our kids and their parents to reinforce that, again, wearing a mask is the best way to show respect for your fellow man because your wearing a mask protects other people. So that would be part of education. Dr. Montgomery, do you have anything to add to that?
I think you said it very well, Dr. Smith. I think that we'll make sure that we provide information to our kids and to our families at the start of the school year. We'll use the Schoology platform, and we'll build in modules for the kids to go to. We always do a beginning-of-the-year handbook presentation where we go over all the rules of the school, and we're just going to have this additional component that's going to include safety measures and things about safe distances and about wearing masks and all of those things so that we can educate our students and avoid any kind of issues with discipline.
Yeah. And I think that's, I think that's the best answer that we can have, and, and recognize the challenge of, of wearing a mask for perhaps up to seven hours every day. That's how long a school day is. And so that is something that we really need to consider and weigh and be aware of before we go into this with our eyes wide open. Will there be fall sports or extracurricular activities? I'm going to punt that back to Mr. Watson. I think you, you gave a pretty, pretty good response.
Yeah, just to recap, we're very hopeful, but you know, we're also understanding that planning for different multiple scenarios. Again, August 12th is our first scheduled date for fall sports to begin. We also have contingency schedules built in that would possibly impact the length of the season, could possibly impact winter and spring as well. So we are planning with multiple schedules in mind and multiple start gates in mind as well. And we are hopeful at some point that we will be able to have a fall season. Just don't know when that will be.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And we're getting pretty close to our end here. The last question, and it came, it's been posed many ways, and some quite passionate. What will happen when, not if, what will happen when a student or a staff member tests positive for COVID? And, and we do need to recognize that, that that's an inevitability. If we bring back thousands of children to school sites, there will be instances where students test positive for COVID. And with over 2,000 staff members, it is inevitable that a staff member will test positive for COVID. I can tell you that I have been, again, going back to my daily conversations with Dr. Brewster, the director, the chief health officer, the health officer for St. Mary's County, we're, we will be providing in writing and explicitly exactly how that will be handled. Because not only is there the threat of the, of the COVID disease itself, the infection itself, but we also have to recognize that, that there's FERPA and HIPAA at work in our schools, and so you can't share health information with other people. So how do we go about that? And then the other is recognizing that the reality in working with children is that, is that that also would be something that may very well impact the child and may create a certain amount of stigma if they are identified as somebody who indeed contracted COVID. So these are all things that we are considering and not taking lightly. And for anybody who's posing the question is, how many, how many kids have to pass away or how many staff members have to pass away before schools are closed? I mean, well, I don't necessarily appreciate the phrasing of the question. I understand the, the passion behind it. I go back to our, our principles of education, the safety of our students and staff have to come first in all decisions that we make. And so with that, I would like to thank those who have entered questions, continue to do so. You can also submit emails to concerns@boe.smcps.org. You can reach out to any one of us. We have over 90 people on the committees. They're talking to many people. Many of you may very well know them. We want to have all the questions asked so we can put forth the very best plan. We will be presenting it next week to the Board of Education, following up with a town hall on the 29th, and then direct communication to parents in the month of August. We don't take any decisions about children lightly, and we recognize it is the greatest trust anyone can put into someone else's hands, the, the future and the education of a child. And I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who has, who has really been doing this work and tirelessly moving us forward. St. Mary's County is an incredible place to live. It's an incredible place to work, and most importantly, it's an incredible place to raise children because it is the best school system. Thank you very much. And with that, I will conclude our second town hall meeting. Thank you very much.